I'd like to call the order. The Myhamsburg City School Board meeting for August 17th. Everyone, please rise for the plate.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Head of the roll call, please.
Mr. Amsler?
Here.
Mr. Daffler?
Here.
Mrs. Gettler?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Mr. Toadvine?
Present.
Dr. Blessing?
Present.
Mr. Holman?
Here. Okay, thank you. I would like to read our mission. Our mission is to foster a positive, nurturing, and safe environment to inspire and support ongoing learning and the development of individuals as productive members of our society. We must be able to conduct our meetings in an orderly fashion. Our expectations tonight, and always, is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. In the event that anyone is disruptive and interferes with the meeting, they will be asked to leave. If they do not, we will request that the law enforcement assist them in the process. Okay? Anyone have green sheets this evening? Seeing none, move along. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move we adopt tonight's agenda, August 17th, 2023.
I second.
I think we're going to go through all the items.
Yeah, that's okay. That's fine. Next, we'll have the approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on July 20th, 2023. Item E is approve a financial report dated July 31st, 2023. F is the recognition and appreciation of our employee, Ms. Cindy West, for 22 years. And I would like to go ahead and do that right now. In case she, I don't know if she got to run away or anything, but I know I better get her while she's here. Okay, thank you. I'm going to read your letter that we've given you. Okay, this is a resolution of appreciation. Whereas Cindy West has rendered 22 years of service to Myhamsburg City Schools, and whereas Cindy West's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement, and whereas Cindy West has distinguished herself as a custodian in the Myhamsburg City School District for 22 years, therefore, be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of the said Board of Education meeting dated August 17th, 2023.
So Cindy, would you like to come up and we'll present your resolution and also your bell? So what buildings and departments did you work in?
I worked at the high school, and then when the middle school opened up, I went to the middle school.
Okay, always a custodian? Okay, so there's that. Anything you want to, any parting words?
I would just like to thank everybody at Myhamsburg for letting me have the chance to come to the school and be a custodian. I've had a lot of fun, I've met a lot of people and friends, and I'm going to miss them.
Wonderful, well, we're going to miss you as well. There's your bell, and if we want to get a quick picture, and then we'll have the board -- hand. Okay, got it. Congratulations. What are you going to do? What's your --
Went to the middle school, my granddaughter's scrimmage game, Valley View, playing volleyball. Going to ballgames on Friday nights that I couldn't go to because I worked third shift for all these years. Just enjoying my five grandkids.
Wonderful, we'll be sure to get some doughnut holes, because they start selling those about like the third quarter, so that's what I look forward to. Enjoy.
So I just want to say a couple words.
And, yes. Oh, yes.
No, I just want to say thank you very, very much, Cindy. I've done you all these years, and you've, when we talk about people who are dedicated to this district and work tirelessly and effortlessly, I have never known you as a person. We've asked you to step in and do something, you've always done it, and I just want to thank you very much. You're a team player, and I, we are going to miss you drastically. So thank you very, very much, and thank you for your friendship through the years. Thank you for, I'm going to tell you, the middle school teachers, I know when you left the high school, the high school teachers were like, "She can't go." And I know the middle school teachers feel the same way, and that's because you made them feel a part of your family, and they made you feel a part of their family. So thank you very, very much, and enjoy a well-deserved retirement.
And Cindy, I'd like to say that, you know, I was a teacher for part of your, when you were doing, and --
We heard he left his lab always amassed, is that true?
She loved to go in there and shake the paws with the cats. But thank you, because, you know, you did a, really did do an outstanding job. Everything on that certificate is true of you, so.
Absolutely.
Every, everybody that, that knows you truly appreciates what you've done for the school district, you know, and you're a hard worker, and you get her done. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Want to shake hands? You notice that she goes, she's one of the first ones, few recently, that didn't start crying when they got her bell.
Happy retirement, right?
It really feels good. I don't have to go to work at night, you know? It's like, I'm home, you know, and it's like, I love it.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Enjoy your grandkids.
You don't have to say, "Be tortured by this man."
Oh, she's out of here, she's going to volleyball, right?
Oh, that's right. She's got a game. Item G is the elementary enrollment update from Amy, or you?
Yes. Well, good evening. We started school on Tuesday and Wednesday, and first day today for Maddox Lang preschoolers, so the week is continuing for first days of school and first week of school. Our Medlar View preschoolers start Monday. So just a brief update, we have not met yet as our committee this month, so if you want to go to the next slide, we do have some construction updates since July, if we want to move over. Yeah, that's okay. You can go past this page as well. I really have one. So in Aberdeen, they are finishing up. That second road has been finished there off of Myhamsburg Spring Borough. You want to talk a little bit about the bus pattern until they completely finalize?
Yeah, once, once they finish up, I think almost all the lots have now at least been started that are left in there, so once the construction is through there, we'll eventually get some buses to go through there, but right now we can't get buses through because of all the semis, concrete trucks, all that in there in terms of that, so, but it is, it is developing very, very fast, so.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. And then on the next slide, Rivendell Heights is part of the Chamberlain Farms development. And if you want to go one more slide, they have, since our last meeting, they have begun construction. So we have about five home sites that are sold, well, actually, there's almost 20 that are sold, but there is now construction in Rivendell, and so they say it takes about six months for those homes to be built. So that is definitely a new development since we left school in May. And then the next picture, Chamberlain Crossing, it is also part of Chamberlain Farms, and they have six homes on the market. So they built a model home, but then they have six additional homes that if you go to their website, they are advertising that they could be occupied as soon as September 15th, and those are six family homes. And then the last piece of Chamberlain Farms is the Redwood Apartments, and they are now under construction as well, but I could not find any sales information at this point. But those are rental apartments, but they're really like patio homes, they have garages, and they're, they're one-story units, they're not like high-rise or anything. So that's what's happening in Chamberlain, so we'll have to see how that impacts our enrollment. And then we're still monitoring Patriot Place. As far as we know, there's no home sites on that property yet, no development in Deer Park, so we'll just continue to moderate, model, excuse me, monitor those. And then the Austin Commons Apartments in the Jane Chance area, they have not finished construction, but we were told in October, so we'll keep watching that as well. So those are our construction updates. Also, we were going to do a quick enrollment update because school did start as of Tuesday, and so we took our enrollments from the end of the school year last year as of the 15th, which was already now two days ago. And, and in the green, you see the areas that have seen growth. Bear Elementary School has seen 40 new students. Jane Chance has just seen nine. Mark Twain is up a couple. Medlar View with the Aberdeen Development is up, what, 20, 24 students, I think, if I do the math. And the high school has seen an increase of 11 or 12 students as well. So if you take our enrollment from the end of the school year as of today, or two days ago, we have the exact same enrollment, with our, the biggest growth being in our elementary, four of our elementary schools. So we'll continue to watch that. There are still students being enrolled, but also students being withdrawn as their schools may start a different day than ours. So we will have a more con, hopefully, a concrete numbers as we move into next month. As we look at these numbers, if you go to the next page, again, from the last day or around the last day of school in May until now, we've seen 334 kindergarteners, and last year, at the end of the year, we had 317. But over the summer, those 317 kindergarteners grew to 345 first graders, so we see some growth there. But sometimes families choose to send their, their students to possibly a private or a religious-based kindergarten, so we, sometimes we do see an uptick in first grade. In fifth grade, we saw 30, what, 24 new students, so those are some pockets of growth, and we have seen some growth in our high schools as well, if we break that down by grade levels. So again, we're going to continue to watch that and, and see as we go. When we talk about class sizes, the, the range, and we did, we did, I want to point out to our, our families and anyone watching this evening, we have 241 families or students as of today that want, that are in our full-day kindergarten program. Last year, we only had 182 in that program, so we have increased the number of full-day sections from last year, we had nine, and this year we have 12. And the number of families that wanted half-day this year was only 93 compared to 135 last year. And those class sizes in full-day kindergarten range from 16 in a class to 26, and in half-day, they range from 14 to 25. So again, because we have them spread out, even consolidating them a little bit, we still have a large range in class sizes. And then in our elementaries, we, because we have seen some growth in some of the elementaries, our class sizes in first grade right now range from 19 to 30, in second grades, they range from 21 to 30, in third grade, they range from 17 to 32, in eighth grade, I mean, not eighth, in fourth grade, they range from 18 to 28, and in fifth grade, right now, they're ranging from 18 to 30. So right now, we do have five sections throughout the, the seven elementaries that have more than 30 students. So again, we're going to see if any of those students that didn't show up or more come, so we're going to continue to evaluate that and figure out the best way to serve those students as we move throughout the year. So that's just a quick update. We're going to be meeting in early September as our committee, and we'll talk about these numbers that we shared, talk about the trends we're seeing. We do have a mock redistricting map, so we'll plug in all of this current data to see where some of these students could go if we fast-forwarded to next year and did any type of redistricting, and then look at some grade-banded schools and how they're configured, and, and those that do well academically for other students. So those are our priorities as we move out of August into September. So Amy and I are happy to answer questions, and I think some of our elementary principals are here as well, if anyone has any specific enrollment questions or programming at this point.
Does the banding, the banding, would that help alleviate some of the class size as far as the kindergarteners? Because you have the, the range of approximately 10 on each. Does that help?
It would help dramatically. One of the piece, one of the pieces of data that we plan to bring to the enrollment committee and then to the board at our September meeting will be to look at that data specifically to show what the class sizes would be in grade-banded configurations. We felt like only two days into the school year probably isn't the best time to gauge that, but after Labor Day, we should have, be pretty well settled and be able to use those numbers to, to bring that to you.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
What about a monetary value to whether it is more beneficial or what then in, you know, now and what we estimate either save on with whatever we do? Are we going to be able to see that at some point?
I believe we'll, we'll be able to see. If we were, if, if we had a grade-banded scenario right now, we wouldn't have needed to hire one of the long-term subs that we did hire for kindergarten, two, two out of the, so we would have saved that money. Because we're seeing more and more families want full day, and if we had a grade-banded scenario, we could cut down on midday transportation routes, which would also be a cost savings. Those are just two right out of the gates that we have seen this year in terms of trying to figure out how to make it work. Oh, and I have one more thing under board discussion. If we, in January, we set our board meeting dates, and as we are looking into the fall board meetings, we have noticed that our December board meeting is during winter recess. So it is slated for Thursday, December 21st, so our students and our staff will be on winter break at that time. So we wondered if there's a possibility that we could move that up a week to Thursday, December 14th, if that's okay with everyone. Does that work?
I don't have a problem with it. I'm good.
Thank you. We'll have Brenda do the notice and make sure everyone's aware, but that way we could have some recognition of our students and our schools. It would be hard to do that if we kept it on December 21st, so, okay. And we were looking at October because we have it early or late because of fall break, and we really think we can just leave that October 26th and, and it be okay to get everything ready for the board packet, even though our staff is gone. The week prior, Mrs. Hibbard felt like we could talk about it, but she's okay with leaving the, the board meeting October 26th if everyone else is okay with that, so.
I'm good.
So we'll make the change for December 14th to be our December board meeting, so thank you.
Before we, before we have a roll call, I'd just like to say that having been in a classroom myself, obviously, you can service the children better if you have a class of 22 versus 32, and having looked at all the different possibilities and the number of rooms that we have and so forth in the elementary buildings, I'm just going to come out and say that the grade banding would answer the problems of having those children get a better education. And Corey, I understand your, your question about the finances, but if it does cost a little bit more, and, and if it costs any more, it's just going to be a little bit, it's not going to be a lot, it's certainly worth having those children get a better education, and I think, I know you would agree with that part of it, so I just wanted to put, put that out there, okay? Something, something needs to be done, because 32 in a classroom is, is just, is not good. And that thing of it is, is if we, we continue with what we're doing, there's going to be at least 32 next year in the classrooms unless we divide that out and get, you know, 16 kids in a, in a classroom, which would be much more workable and much better, but then you're paying for those additional teachers. You know, and a lot of our modern classrooms in some of our schools, they're not made for 30-some kids. The science classes definitely, there's, you know, there, you just, 24 is too many in a science class to me, and I, because I, I taught middle school and I taught high school. And I can just tell you, the numbers are very, very important for whenever kids are doing hands-on things because there are safety issues and things like that that have to be dealt with, and especially at, at a younger, younger age and stuff, so. So that's, it's amazing what those kids could do. I know for my own kids at home, those scissors with the rounded edges on them, rusty, you think of all kinds of things to do with those things, those scissors. But anyway, thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the meeting opening items A through G.
Again, I will say, I make a motion for the approval of opening items A, Alpha through G golf.
I was just going to ask a question, though, about the financial report, is that okay?
Yeah.
I just wondered about the July 733,000 down revenue, do you think that's just timing?
It is, and I was going to speak to that, and we kind of moved past it, but the updated biennial budget, I had input that into the calculations, and then what I haven't done is update the insurance amounts that are going to go in. So the expenditures and the revenue right now are a little bit out of whack, but that's going to get straightened out in the next couple months when I get a little more information. So those numbers, I think right now, it's showing that based on what's in there, we would have a positive amount on the cash balance of three and a half million, but that's overestimated currently because of the numbers that are in there, and those will be adjusted before September.
Thank you. Okay, we had a first from Mr. Amsler, we have a second?
I second it.
Second from Mrs. Neese. Roll call, please. Severance pay. Would I like to speak to that?
Yeah, I can, unless you want to. So three of those are all the same because they cross-reference in the board policy to each other, and so, as you know, we've settled with MCTA teachers negotiated agreement and then Teamsters negotiated agreement. So when we do those, we go through our board policies and clean up those that affect other members, other staff members in the district as well. So in terms of the severance, they adjusted the tables for teachers to go up to 456 days, so that's, that's why that's adjusted in that area. And then also, we put a caveat in there that too, that within your retirement of the first three months, you need to turn in your retirement statement in order to be paid out that severance, instead of drawing out, drawing out, because one thing, and just inside of it, those are all built on the five-year forecast, and if we start, depending on how many sick days you have, that kind of whopper draws some of the figures that he has out there for that. And then the other one for the classified staff vacations and holidays, so what we did in the Teamsters, we've had a past practice of pro-rating vacation, so we have a lot of employees that, that are eight, nine-month employees, and they might move into a 261, like a Cindy West that we had tonight. So what we do is we prorate their time when they were eight, nine-month employees to prorate to determine how much vacation time they would get in terms of that. And so we've always done that, and so we put it in the Teamsters contract, and we do the same thing for non-bargaining when they move into those positions, so that's the only change within that.
Next, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following board policies, which were the ones that I just read up there. Certified and non-certificated administrators and non-bargaining unit members severance pay. Classified staff vacations and holidays, non-bargaining unit. Certified and non-certificated administrators and non-bargaining unit members severance pay. And certified and non-certificated administrators and non-bargaining unit members severance pay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions before we move on? Okay. Next is the, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the adoption revision of board policies, items A and B. I have a motion.
I move to approve the adoption revision of board policy items A and B. I'll second.
We had a first from Mrs. Neese, a second from Mrs. Gettler. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Okay, the items have passed. Move on to the consent agenda. Item A, by the way, there's A through E here. The superintendent and director of business services recommend approval of the following resolution for the 2023-2024 school year as presented. Is it agenda item in lieu of 2324 PDF 26KB? Anybody want to comment?
So this is a yearly item that we put on that all school districts across Ohio put in. So what it is, it's, it's called, if, if it's practical enough for us to transport to a school, there might be a school that maybe only has four or five students that attend that building, so in terms of practicality for us to run a full school bus there for four to five students, it would be impractical for us to do that based upon fuel, service, the bus driver, all that. So that's why we, we call something called an in lieu of payment, where the state sets that amount each year, and then we pay that amount to the parent for that. It's much more practical for us to pay that amount than to, to run drivers, especially when you don't have drivers to run it, in order to do that as well.
And if I am, if I remember correctly, wasn't that like 500 and some dollars, I believe it was?
Yeah, 596.
Forty-five something. Seventeen.
Yeah, we actually got it early this year, and I think I sent that out already.
Yeah, I think I saw that. So that's, that's a deal, really, for, for us to have to sit a school bus.
Yeah, and the state sets it. It's, it's just like that you have to set your tuition rate each year, which is later on in the agenda. It's, it's driven by the state, so.
All right, thanks, Steve. The superintendent and director of business services recommend that the following students be released, accepted for transportation purposes for the 2023-2024 school year. West Carrollton City Schools accept transportation liability for a liya, a liya pow for transportation services to attend Dayton Christian Schools. That's just typical.
That's typical. We, we try to work with other school districts around if we already have buses that run to a certain area. We've done it with West Carrollton a lot some years, we're able to help them out other years, they help us out. It's, it's, it's a nice partnership that we work with them. We do it with Centerville, too, in terms of, of that as well, since they border us. We're on the same, we're on the same boat together trying to get kids to school, and if we can help each other out, we, we try to do that.
I can remember when we would have ever helped them out. And they would now, that's how you'd be enemies when it comes to sports and all that kind of stuff, that was kind of, kind of fun back then. Approval and warning of many grants for 2023-2024 school year. Becky Benner, Laura Blessing, Danette Chance, Elise Hafenbrak. Becky Benner, Laura Blessing, Danette Chance, Elise Hafenbrack, Lee Heronimus, Joy Zakovich, Kathy Sperry, and Stacy Moore reviewed the mini-grants proposals for 2023-2024 school year. The attached list of projects is recommended for approval for joint funding and with the Board Education and the Myersburg Schools Education Foundation. Okay, and that's the 2023-2024 mini-grant winner list. I can address that, Joe's not here, but he did, he's been doing it for years. And, um, the Board of Education, I believe, started out with like a thousand dollars that we gave towards the foundation many years ago when it started. Then it went to twenty-five hundred and, and then we finally got it up to, I believe, five thousand now. And, uh, I think that Chris and I, we've been here the longest and we can attest that, there's a lot of really good things that come out of those mini-grants and stuff. So, um, I would, I would like to recommend something and, and I may be off-base here, Amy, but, um, I know you, you, uh, can relay this to Stacy, but, um, by the way, Stacy's not here because she's had some family, uh, death in her family, so. But anyway, I think it would be really neat if, um, we put it out there to pick more parents, that they could come and see all of them. You know, because it's, it's, it's something I think that's well worth them seeing that, you know, that they're, that the kids are doing because those projects are really neat. They really are. I, I appreciate it. I, I got some of that money many, many years ago as a, as a teacher to do a land lab out of the high school. That was a tough job. We went and got railroad ties and those were not easy to move around, made trails and all that stuff and that boys and I being everything else. Anyway, um, item D, uh, section thirty-three seventeen dot oh-eight of the revised code provides a formula whereby the annual tuition rate shall be calculated. The in-state tuition rate for the Myersburg City School District for a 2023-2024 school year is seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. That is an increase of two hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
And this, as Steve mentioned earlier with the in lieu of transportation, the tuition rates are set by, um, the state of Ohio and we have to adopt our annual tuition rate, but we do not accept, uh, we are not an open enrollment district. So we don't accept payments. It's just we have to adopt it as part of the Ohio revise code for tuition rates, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item E is recommended that the Board of Education approve consent items A through D. I have a motion.
I move for the adoption of consent items A through D.
Second.
We had a first from Mr. Daffler, a second from Mr. Amsler. Roll call please.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Okay, next we'll move on to the human resources agenda items. And, um, this will be A through G. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Myersburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with the adopted board policies. I'm going to item B. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports, supplemental stipends, certificated and classified. That is the same that I just read for the previous item. Item C. It is recommended by the Board of Education that Rhonda Zimmerley be hired as an interim Assistant Treasurer for the Myersburg City Schools effective August sixteenth, 2023 for a temporary term on an as-needed basis through December thirty-first of 2024. The Board fixes her compensation subject to the applicable payroll withholdings at the rate of seventy-five dollars per hour. In addition, on any day during which her presence is required in the district's office, she will receive mileage reimbursement at the IRS rate for her commute from home to the district office and a return from the district office back to her home. She will also receive school employees' retirement pickup on the pickup. All employer and employee contributions paid by the Board and the employee Medicare of one point four-five percent contribution will also be paid by the Board.
Uh, so you guys know Rhonda, she'd been the intern before John got in and because we're going to be having a vacancy in the Assistant Treasurer position, Rhonda's agreed to come in and fill that to help out and, uh, help me.
Yeah, Rhonda is, um, she actually has taught treasurers in the past, so she's, she's kind of like a real prize to get, you know, to come and fill in for Marilyn after she leaves, so, um, that, that's a, that's a good thing. Marilyn's shoes are pretty hard to fill. She, she definitely, um, is something else. Item D is recommended by the Superintendent to approve the following administrators to be OTEST evaluators. That's Ohio Teacher Evaluation. Michael Black, Laura Blessing, Sarah Music, uh, Amy Dobson, Dale Guyer, Jessica Hoben, Steve Holman, Rebecca Huber, Nicole Johnson, Diana Keller, Kelly Lee Marker, Eric Linsky, Brittany Lipinski, Katie Lucas, Summer Mastrinardi, Haley Moore, Stacy Moore, Robert Newbauer, Shannon Rupert, Jeremy Saylor, Tara Spears, Tammy Sunderman, and Kelly Thomas. This is just pretty standard, uh, and we do it every year, uh, and that's about all we need to say about that one. Item E is recommended by the Superintendent, uh, to approve the following administrators be OTEST evaluators. Michael Black, Principal at the high school, Dr. Laura Blessing, who is the Superintendent, Steve Holman is Assistant Superintendent, and Kelly Thomas is the middle school head principal. Item F is recommended by the Superintendent to approve the following administrators to be OSC ES evaluators. Michael Black, Amy Dobson, Dale Guyer, Steve Holman, Rebecca Huber, Katie Lucas, Kelly Lee Marker, Summer Mastrinardi, Stacy Moore, Shannon Rupert, Jeremy Saylor, Tammy Sunderman, and Kelly Thomas. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve human resource items A through F. I have a motion.
I move for the approval of human resource items A through F.
I second it.
Okay, so we had a first from, uh, Mr. Daffler and a second from Mrs. Nice. Roll call please.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Okay, next we'll move on to agreements and contracts. Item A is recommended by the Superintendent and Director of Student Services to enter into an agreement with Panorama Education as presented. That's in Myersburg City Schools twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This is a renewal.
This is, um, the platform that we use to do our surveys for staff and students. Um, it's grant-funded through Atomus, um, in our prevention grants that we get each year. So this is a zero-dollar contract, um, entering them so that we can continue to use the platform for our surveys.
Thank you, Mrs. Lucas. Item B, the Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education assessment team agreement with Montgomery County Educational Service Center for the 2023-2024 school year as presented. Dr. Blessing? Back over there again?
So the ESC had made a decision this year to, sorry.
Uh, they made a decision this year to, um, if you were going to use them to evaluate, um, students for any particular reason, that it had to be, um, a separate contract that we entered into. Montgomery County ESC provides our services mostly for hearing impairment, um, and they have specialized, um, audiologists who do those sorts of evaluations. We don't have any on staff, so we have to utilize them. So this is just an agreement so that if we need them, uh, we can, uh, get a quote and then they will do the evaluation for us.
Thank you. Item C is recommended by the Superintendent and Director of Student Services to enter into an agreement with Youth Villages Incorporated as presented. I assume this is you again?
Yeah, this is a, a foster place youth that's in a specialized program, so it's an agreement to educate them while they're in that program.
Okay, thank you. Item D, it is recommended by the Superintendent and Director of Student Services to enter into an agreement with professional software for nurses incorporated as presented.
So we are finally entering into the electronic charting age. So our nurses are going to be transitioning from writing passes and make, keeping tons of notebooks and writing all this stuff out, um, to an actual electronic charting software. So this will help us to be, um, more compliant. It'll also save a ton of time for the nurses, um, and being able to enter the visits that students make with the, um, student, with the nurses in the electronic charting as well as tracking medications in and out and the administration of medication and other, um, health, uh, services that they provide. So we're pretty excited to be able to finally do this for them.
Thank you. Mrs. Getter, you have anything to say?
I'm really glad that we're moving from paper to electronic charting. It's going to be a really, I'd, like you said, a time saver, but also for future and also when you had a substitute nurse, she's not going to have to ruffle through notebooks. She's going to be able to go to that student's chart and see what's going on, you know, at a glance. And that, you know, not only could that save time, but it might save a life. So I'm, I'm thrilled with this.
Thank you. I knew you'd want to comment, uh, for our conversation today, but I was picking on you. Okay, let's go to item E. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve agreements and contracts items A through D. Motion please.
I move that we approve agreements and contract items A through D. I second.
Okay, we had a first from Mrs. Nice, a second from Mrs. Getter. Took the words right out of your mouth, didn't they, Chris? Chris started to talk, he was like, yeah, baby.
Good, we're all good.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Okay. Move on to the financial agenda items, A through E. Item A, it is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that appropriations and certificate of estimated resources are amended as listed in the attached reports. Appropriations and receivables by cash account, amended official certificate of estimated resources. We'll let Mr. Treasurer handle this.
So typically every month I put this on here and it just tells you what is being budgeted and then what our estimated resources are. And we have to get these approved by the Board and the, obviously the budget amount can't exceed what is being received.
Thank you. Item B is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the Myersburg Board of Education approve the report of commercial paper purchases from July first of 2021 through June thirtieth of 2022 and any fees associated with these investments pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, section one hundred and thirty-five point one four-two.
So commercial paper is, uh, short-term debt instruments that are issued by corporations that schools have now been allowed to invest in. And part of Ohio Revised Code is that you all are given a report of what commercial paper we've invested in so that you can sign off on that.
Thank you. Item C, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve fiscal year, uh, twenty-four oh-one-eight and two-hundred budget and purposes statements as presented.
And again, this is just compliance, it was kind of new, but they've been on the last three board meetings that we've had. And it's just because you guys have to approve the building funds, what they're spending it on.
Okay, thank you. Item D is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the Board of Education approve the following purchase orders. M-I-A-B-C-S, whatever that means, I don't know. Four-six-eight-two dot PDF, five-seven-five KB. Wow, I feel like I'm a Secret Service agent or something here.
That's just generic, uh, when you download it. It's just given it that number of however many has been downloaded, but this is just board policy, anything over twenty-five thousand dollars you have to approve.
Okay, thank you. By the way, that was, uh, thirty thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents to Forward Edge Incorporated. Okay? Item E. The Treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the following transfer. EMUS eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. EMUS one hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents. General O-O-one account, uh, one hundred and eighty-one thousand. General O-O-one account term, three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So the EMUS transfers are done annually and it's mainly just moving the money from the previous year's account, account code into this year's account code. That's why you see the ninety-nine, twenty-four. Twenty-four stands for fiscal year twenty-four. And then the, uh, general fund move over to the O-thirty-five fund is to fund that account so that we can pay for, um, things like retirement and severance.
So, and I take it you figured, you, you kind of, that's just an estimate of what may happen because we don't know exactly if people are going to retire or not.
Correct.
But we want to be able to cover that.
Right.
When that does occur.
So we just kind of look at what's going on in years past and then look at, um, you know, years of service people have in and kind of try to estimate who might retire and when, and then we want to make sure we've got it funded so that we can cover whatever those costs are.
Okay, thank you. Item F is recommended that the Board of Education approve the financial items A through E. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the approval of the financial items A, Alpha through E echo.
I second.
Mr. Amsler's a first. Mrs. Getter's a second. That was a tough one there for a minute. I was, you, you got to be Mr. Lewis tonight.
See that?
Okay, yeah, I, I circled it. Move on to the acceptance of donations. Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. See, that threw me off there.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Okay, so all these items A through E have been passed. Section eight, acceptance of donations, is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's O-one-eight account unless indicated otherwise. Hundred fifty dollars to the Myersburg Schools Community Connections Program from Trinity Church of Myersburg for the purchase of school supplies. School supplies valued at approximately five thousand dollars to Mark Twain Elementary School from Myersburg Assembly of God Church. Thirteen thousand dollars to the Myersburg City School District from the Myersburg High School Alumni Golf Outing. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Destination Imagination, fifteen hundred and the Myersburg School Band Boosters, a thousand from the Ohio State Eagles, Myersburg, number twenty-three oh-six. Backpacks and school supplies valued at two hundred and ninety dollars to the Myersburg Schools valued at $290 to the Myhersburg School Community Connections Program from Jewel Mumol. Viking Vahala donations through Myhersburg City Schools Employee Payroll Deduction. Amount indicated is a total of three-year pledge unless otherwise indicated. $355 from DeeDee Hendrix, $355 from Mary Ankrum, $355 from Debbie Bolger, $710 from Chris House, $284 from Diana Keller, $568 from Andy Kleber, $1,420 from Michelle Lieber, $1,065 from Eric Linsky, $355 from Amber Nicholas, $284 for Monty Wilhelm, $50 from Karen Vengris. Donation to Myhersburg City Schools, a member memory of Jennifer Templin, $150 from Maria Brown, $75 from Julie Cameron, $100 from Kim Chartrean, $45 from Darrow and Angie Davis, $750 from Ironton St. Joseph Class of 1988, $50 from Anita and Edsel Fitzpatrick, $200 from Ali Qodada, $50 from Kelly Lee Marker, $50 from Vinyu Gopai Palaki, $200 from Paul and Chris Schaefer, Matt and Cheryl Schaefer, Ann and Dan Herman, Joanne and Andy Noblet, Dan and Christina Schaefer, and Jane Schaefer. $50 from Teresa Smith, $100 from John and Karen Templin, and $50 from Eileen Driggs. I would like to say, that's a lot of money for a lot of good things there, and it's well appreciated by everybody in the school district period. But, you know, the greatest thing about all these donations and stuff is that our students are the ones that are the people that are receiving all this, obviously, a show of kindness from all these people. So, thank you. Nope?
That's thanks, just such generous donations.
Very generous.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please? Oh, yes, yeah, we definitely need a motion. I was doing so well tonight, too. Hang on.
I make a motion that we accept the donations.
Second.
Okay, so, we have a first from Mrs. Gettler, a second from Mr. Daffler. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Amslar?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed. Move on to reports, and Dr. Blessing, I see you put your name in there. Good. I was almost prepared to do that. Joe Izakovich is not here this evening, so Dr. Blessing is going to fill in for him.
Good evening. How am I doing? I think it's taken me four years to try to, you know, mimic, not mimic, but just even try to come close to Joe's good evening. So, he has a very short report for us. There are, there are an amazing 1,916 students starting school at the MVC TC. This is one of their largest classes ever, and I know that's due in part to their large building that they were able to build. It's amazing. In May of 2024, the senior recognition ceremony, I did say May of 2024, will be held at the UD Arena instead of the Wright State Nutter Center. This will be a vast improvement, and the date will be Friday, May 17th at 6:30 PM. Construction continues at a great pace, and we have been able to move some staff into their forever homes earlier than anticipated. Many smiles. That's it for this month, short and sweet. Let me know if you have any questions or comments, and he'll catch us next month.
Okay, thank you.
That was nice, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. That's the shortest report Joe ever gave.
Yeah, for sure.
Mr. Daffler?
Nothing here this month.
Nothing from our legislative liaison, Mr. Corey Daffler?
Nothing.
I wanted to say good evening, though.
Good evening. Okay, Student Achievement Liaison, Chris Amslar?
I don't, I do have a question in regards to Safety Town. Do you, I got a phone call, but I didn't know if you got any information as well as, I know it's setting in place. I got a call from Officer Seder. The curriculum that we're going to use is from Middletown, but it's way outdated, Donald Duck stuff. So, we are going to, I think the preliminary plan with talking with them is we are going to set a curriculum based on what is sent to us, kind of take a look at it. We will refilm a lot of things through the police department and the fire department, and put a program together that will be utilized by using the actual facility and things. So, I did go out and take a look at that the other day when I saw it set in place after getting back from Utah, and I'm excited.
Yeah, and they'll be getting, the fence will be set probably by late September, early October. Still waiting on supplies to come in. We ordered that a while ago. And then, Ed and his crew will be doing the striping within the next couple of weeks out there. So, we are having Kurt and Andy look out there for additional security lighting and cameras and things like that out there. But, and then we have Mr. Hen's class at the high school that we're going to be talking with. They'll be the ones to kind of help maintain and paint and repair the buildings as they go through out there. So, we're excited, and that's another example of a partnership between the communities working together to offer the program, so.
We have a meeting in the morning at 10:00 to discuss some things.
That's right, we have a meeting tomorrow. Thank you for the reminder.
Just setting up some security lights and cameras, and then just finding out more about, like, a timeline hopefully for the fence. So, yeah.
Once I get the curriculum sent to me and to kind of take a look at it, I'll bring it down and take a look, let you take a look at it, and see what we're thinking as we have meetings going forward, so.
You better be a big part of that videotaping.
I think Chris is going to be the narrator. That's what I heard him say.
Say again?
You're going to be the narrator.
I don't know about that.
He's going to be the star.
Yeah. Be careful what you say, Chris. You get excited. I know how you are. When Chris was in school and he played ball for me, he would, he would get so excited and get so out of breath. He was running 150,000 miles an hour, giving 110% all the time, you know. So, for him to say he's excited about something, I'm really happy. Good job.
Thanks.
Let me know how it goes with you.
I'll, I'll let you know.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Neese, how about the Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition?
No meeting, but since these two events haven't happened yet, I thought I'd just say something about them again. The overdose awareness day on Thursday, August 31st, from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Levitt Pavilion, and there will be a free concert by the recovering, by recovering artists. And then, the Family of Addicts Rally will be held August 27th from 1:00 to 6:00 at the Courthouse Square. Yeah, I notice when we, we go to a lot of Dayton Dragons games, and if you park in the Good Neighbor's parking lot, that donation goes to the family, families of addicts. Not every time, but like every other time. So, that's one of the cheaper parking lots that you can go to as well. They're getting up high these days. Some of them are up to like $8 and $10 now, but they're still five. So, keep that in mind for next season.
Yeah. Okay, there really is no district news for this evening.
We'll have a student of the month next meeting, as well as a building report. So, Chris will have something to read as well as Dale.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, next we'll move on to comments, and we will start with Mr. Daffler.
Just welcome everybody back to school, and hope everything has gone well, and hope for a great school year, and get into these fall sports and everything that goes along with the great school year. That's all I got.
I'll just say ditto.
Well, I was excited to be able to visit each of the elementary schools during their open houses on Monday, and to witness so much enthusiasm by the students and the teachers, and the parents and the grandparents. Everybody was just, you could just feel the atmosphere. It was really, really exciting. And then, congratulations to Cindy on her retirement. I just thank her for 22 years of service. That's amazing.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, but I'm going to take a little bit of time here. I'm going to go off on a tangent. This is my sixth year on the board, and it has certainly been a pleasure. It is a nonpartisan position. I hope everyone knows that. And I've been asked a few times now if critical race theory is taught Myhersburg schools. So, I just want to give you a little history about that. Critical race theory is a theory that emerged in the 70s. I think it was founded at Harvard Law School. The theory examines how the legacy of slavery and segregation in the United States is embedded in modern-day legal systems and policies. It is typically taught at the graduate level, particularly at law schools. And then, I just wanted to add that the Ohio Department of Education does not reference CRT in its learning standards. You can find these standards on the ODE website. I just want to say I'll prepare you, though. If you want to go in and look at them, you're going, it takes a lot of time, so you're going to need a lot of patience, and it's quite the ordeal to comb through all these grade-level standards, and that our district and our state employ. And then, the other thing I wanted to say is thank for all the, thank you for all the donations. Thanks for all the staff members who worked hard to get classrooms ready. The floors were cleaned and waxed. Rooms and buses were cleaned. Bus schedules developed, technology updated. The staff was hired to fill resignations. Rooms were arranged, bulletin boards prepared. Rooms were filled with necessary learning materials and pleasing decor. Some of the decor at the open houses was just lovely. Lesson plans were written. Trainings took place over the summer. Placements were arranged. I know Mrs. Dobson did a lot of this for the preschoolers at Maddox Lane or Medlar View. Class scheduling at the high school and middle school. Grants were written and awarded. Maybe Dr. Blessing will talk a little bit about that. And those are just a few that I wanted to name of all those tasks accomplished this summer that, you know, got us started on the right foot for a new school year. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. That's good.
Sorry, sorry about my long...
That's okay, because I'll make mine short.
Okay.
Chris, come on now. You run, you run an extra lap tonight. You run an extra lap tonight. Cindy's retirement. Cindy, thank you for, once again, for everything that you've done. Thanks for the donations, nice donations that we got. And as being a past teacher, the opening of school is always exciting, you know. It's probably in my lifetime, and I've lived a long time now, that was one, one thing that I always looked forward to, was meeting my students and take, just going from there. But, that, that first day was always special. It was always special. In the many grants, board, I'm very pleased that where, where we're at as far as the many grants and our donation, and it looks like that we are getting quite a few applicants for that, and we might want to look at, seeing if, would help if we upped our donation a little bit. Steve, would you, would you look at that and talk with Justin about maybe if we can pull something off there? Because I know you like to do that.
Well, pass that on to Stacy. Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay. And I'm done.
I'm just happy to be here. Good luck finishing out the rest of the week, I guess.
I want to ditto what everyone else has said. I want to welcome Jess Hoben. This is her first official week as the Bauer Elementary Principal. Her first... Three days. I don't know. I think Monday counts as two days. What do you, what do you all think? And so, thank you, and for all of the administrators here tonight. It's been a great start to the school year, and we're very excited. It's hard to believe there's, we're already three days in. Our first home football match tomorrow against West Carrollton, so we're excited about that. As Mrs. Neese mentioned, we were notified late last week that with the efforts of our early childhood program, the expansion of our Medlar View preschool and partnership that we have with Head Start, we were able, and also Mrs. Lucas and Sarah Fuzik at the Maddox Lane preschool, we have students that could be eligible to really receive some additional grant funding for their instruction. Preschool is funded very small amount through the state, but we were able to capture some grant dollars. So, for every student that's eligible, we can receive an additional $4,250, with the cap being a little over $500,000. So, we have to make sure they're eligible for income or for special education services in a regular classroom or itinerant services. But, very exciting to have this opportunity to, to get some additional funding, and also the ability to sustain our program, especially at Medlar View moving forward, and also expand next year as well. So, very exciting. And so, we'll be working on the, the legalities and red tape of, of that additional layer of funding, but it's definitely worth it. So, we're thrilled and excited to have this opportunity. So, and I'll pass that on to Mr. Hoben.
I want to say something real quick. Don't say a word down there. Thanks, thank all of you, all of you, for the grants, all the, the hard work that we've been seeing going into these grants, and just the great stuff that's being done with the money, you know. And it's all, it's all kids again. Everything's funneled right at, at our children. So, thank you all of you for that.
It's our pleasure. It's great. It's exciting.
So, I just want to say ditto to everything we've said tonight, but I do want to thank all of our staff for the start of the school year. When you're in the trenches doing things and understanding, it takes a lot to get to this open house dates and get all that prepared, and it takes everyone in this district to do that. And so, from our classified to our certificated, to our administrators, I just want to say thank you very much. The, what we really talk about Myhersburg is a family and how our staff embraces and takes part in, you know, just for example, seeing the bus drivers knowing, having the same routes and knowing the kids' names right away. And even some of those drivers went to open houses. You know, nutrition services, many of them came back in the assistance in the classrooms, and they didn't have to do that for open houses. So, that's just, I think it's a true testament of what a creative and wonderful staff we have, and we could not do without them. So, I just want to say thank you for, for all of you that do everything for our kids every day, and I'm honored as a parent, honored as an employee here, and honored to, to work in a, in a great community where, where our staff really loves our kids. So, thank you to all of our staff, and thank you to the parents for entrusting your kids to us as well. It's, it's an honor to, to serve all of you, so.
Amy and Katie, you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, well, thank you for all your hard work. All right, moving on. Section 11 is adjourned. So, I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second. Come on, Corey, you're always in there on that adjourn. Okay, Mrs. Neese, the first, Mr. Daffler, second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 7:12.